Good evening. I now call the Monday, December 10th, 2018 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting to Order. First item of business is the invocation. Pastor Dante Hichima will be doing the invocation, followed by the pledge by Commissioner Larry Rankin. Would you please stand?
Father, we are addressing the God who made the world and everything in it. He is the Lord of heaven and earth, and He does not live in temples built by hands. He is not served by human hands as if He needed anything because He Himself gives all men life and breath and everything else. From one man, He made every nation of men that they should inhabit the whole earth. And He determined the times set for them, the exact places that they should live. God did this so that men would seek Him and perhaps reach out for Him and find Him, though He is not far from each one of us; for in Him we live and move, and we have our being. Therefore, we are God's offspring, every one of us. And we're ordered first to love God with all that we are and to love one another as we love ourselves. Father, let love reign and rule in this meeting. Although we may be challenged to agree, let us always keep love as our guide and desire toward each other. One last word, and not to you, Father, but to this crowd here. As a former vice mayor, it warms my heart to see so many people in this community with a passion towards its development. Looking back over the 20 years of my living here and the vast amount of changes that have taken place, such as this very building that we are in tonight, the hospital and medical buildings, and the PVA Event Center, and many others. As the news of what a beautiful place Prescott Valley is to live in, let us endeavor to support the process of bringing sustainable growth by our own efforts of volunteering to serve. As maybe a member of this very panel, thank you for your enthusiasm and your thoughtfulness. And, Lord, God bless this panel with the wisdom that they need. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are quite a few seats still available. Per our fire code, would you please try to fill the seats and not stand in the aisles, Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Zercher.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Rankin.
Here.
Commissioner Yater.
Here.
Commissioner Dusky.
Here.
Commissioner Roberts.
Here.
Commissioner Rutherford.
So when it comes to the minutes this evening, we have two minutes to approve, the minutes from the regular session on November 5th and the minutes of the work-study session of November 5th. We need to take separate motions on both of them. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the work-study session from November 5th?
I'll make a motion to approve the work-study minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second, is there a motion to approve the minutes from the regular session meeting on November 5th?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any announcements?
All right. Good evening again. Want to cover this evening's format. My name is Matt Zercher, and I'm the chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'll be presiding over the commission's deliberations on hearing items this evening. The Planning and Zoning Commission sits in advisory capacity to the town council and reviews planning and zoning issues and forwards recommendations regarding these important issues to the council. This evening's proceedings will be conducted using the following format. This evening, we will hear the zoning map change and the accompanying preliminary development plan together. First, I will read the applications into the record. Following the identification of the application, staff will present the case and the recommendations to the commission, after which questions from the Planning and Zoning Commission will be directed to staff regarding the case and then the applicant. The applicant will have an opportunity to comment regarding the matter and/or make a presentation, as well as answer any questions the commission may have. After all questions from the commission have been addressed, I will open the floor to public comment regarding the zoning map change and preliminary development plan before the commission. I'd ask that this evening you be polite and act in a civil manner to all the people here this evening. Outbursts of any kind cannot be tolerated. Also, comments this evening for the public hearing and also call to public will be limited to three-minute intervals, and you will only be allowed to speak once. So with that, we will go on to the zoning map change and the public hearing items and then the number one on the action items. So I'm going to read both into the record. Zoning Map Change 18-011, a request by Viewpoint 89 LLC, David McGuire, agent for a zoning map change from RCU 70, residential, single-family rural to R1L10, planned area development, residential, single-family limited, planned area development on approximately four acres, located on both sides of Pronghorn Ranch Parkway south of Antelope Meadows Drive. Preliminary Development Plan 18-005, upon the application of Viewpoint 89 LLC, David McGuire, agent, a request for a revised preliminary development plan plat comprising 189 lots on approximately 62 acres located on both sides of Pronghorn Ranch Parkway south of Antelope Meadows Drive. Presenting this evening is Mr. Joe Scott.
I rise to a point of order, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, you do not have that right, sir. Please sit down.
Thank Chairman Commissioners. The exhibit here shows the two requests, the planning development plan and the area for the ZMC. Again, just want to clarify this request. This is the only request being considered tonight for the four acres, and it's found to be consistent with the 2006 approval and with the current general plan. And this time, there are no other applications that are deemed complete at this time. So the subject property for both requests were part of Annexation 98A, comprising 155 acres, annexed in the town of Prescott Valley in 1999. The existing Yavapai County zoning for the property at the time was RCU 2A, and the new Prescott Valley zoning classification was RCU 70 was adopted. Again, by state law, property must be annexed in the town with the most similar zoning that existed in the county. Prescott Valley does not have a two-acre zoning district, so the 70 district with a minimum lot size of 70,000 square feet is the closest to the minimum county lot size of 87,120 square feet. In the county, the RCU district is intended to provide a zoning classification for all areas of the county that are not presently characterized by urban uses. Generally, there's no public infrastructure in these areas of the county, two-acre zoning, because they need to support septic systems and many case exempt wells. Since the establishment of the public infrastructure and sewer system, Prescott Valley has developed an urbanized densities like the viewpoint and Pronghorn Ranch. The two-acre zoning then is generally a holding zoning until urban development occurs with a general plan amendment and rezoning to a higher density of units per acre. Essentially, all developed property in Prescott Valley has been rezoned from RCU 70 except for the original residential units and highway commercial that was detailed zoned by Yavapai County in 1970 and was in place at the time of incorporation. The exhibit here shows the previous plan that was approved in 2006 by the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. At that time, Cody Springs LC requested a rezoning on approximately 60 acres for the Antelope Park Residential Development from RCU 70 to the R1L10 PAD zoning. The property is part of Annexation 98A. At the April 10th, 2000 meeting, commission recommended approval of the zoning map change along with a preliminary development plan for 177 lots for single-family detached dwellings, and that the requested rezoning was compatible with the designation of low-density residential as indicated on the general plan 2020 at the time. So the general plan is shown here. That's in place right now and shows currently the low-density. They are, at the time of the approved preliminary development plan, acquired certificates of assured water supply from the Arizona Department of Water Resources. And these certificates have been reissued for the current proposed preliminary development plan, and I'll discuss that a little bit more later. At the time, a traffic study was prepared in 2006 to assess potential impacts from 170 residential lots. Recommendations for needed street improvements included viewpoint drive being widened to four lanes and Antelope Meadows Drive being extended to the east and connecting to State Route 89A at then Robert Road. Antelope Meadows Drive has since been extended to the east, connecting to State Route 89A and Cody Springs Road. And for now, the signalization has been installed at viewpoint drive and Pronghorn Ranch Parkway. A new traffic impact analysis prepared for the revised PDP 1805 and is discussed later in this report. This current rezoning request then is essentially a cleanup of the existing zoning boundary approved in 2006 that corresponded to the preliminary development plan at the time. The four acres of R1L10 PAD zoning is intended to accommodate the revised boundary of the revised preliminary development plan. The requested R1L10 zoning is then in conformance with existing underlying low-density residential designation that has been in place since the annexation. Revised Plumber Development Plan, PDP 1805, now includes 189 single-family detached residential lots on approximately 62 similar acres. This is a density of approximately three units per acre, consistent with the L110 PAD use district, which could allow up to four units per acre. The revised PDP identifies street patterns, open space, and single lot configurations. The streets are redesigned to allow for more efficient utilization of the site and lot configurations. Additional 12 lots were added with the approval of a revised plan by the Arizona Department of Water Resources to obtain an updated certificate of assured water supply for the revised plan. A certificate has been reissued for the 189 lots. The PDP has been reviewed by the town staff and Central Arizona Fire and Medical for emergency access. If this rezoning PDP is approved, the final development plan would be required for council approval and would include detailed engineering sewer water grading. Again, the applicant will discuss some transportation roadways a little bit more, but the upgrades to existing roadway system will occur to accommodate traffic generated by this site. The traffic impact analysis dated October 29, 2018 was submitted and approved, and it identified required improvements that would be needed to construct Phase 1 development, which encompasses this Plumber Development Plan and for the Antelope Park Residential Project. And in your staff brief was identified in Table 26 in the packet for those Phase 1 improvements for this project. Among other improvements, the widening of viewpoint drive from 89A to Pronghorn Ranch Parkway is recommended to assist in eliminating existing traffic congestion during the morning and evening peak hours at the State Route 89A and viewpoint drive interchange, along with dedicated turn lanes, which the applicant will discuss more later. An addendum dated November 15, 2018 was prepared to provide review of future improvements at Pronghorn Ranch Parkway and Antelope Meadows Drive that may be required as part of future development within the surrounding area. The property generally slopes to the east and northeast. The ultimate drainage outfall of the site, the property, is at the northeast corner of the property to existing culverts that crosses under Antelope Meadows Drive. The development of the property will be graded in a manner that will allow storm water runoff to drain from the developed parcels into the streets and designated storm water drainage facilities. Stormwater facilities be constructed to reduce post-development runoff exiting to property equal or less than existing conditions. Development will comply with all local, state, and federal stormwater regulations. The water and wastewater systems will be provided by the town of Prescott Valley. The town is not designated as having assured water supply. However, as discussed, the property does have a 100-year certificate of assured water supply, and you're provided with analysis done by the town's water resource manager. The town has made large investments in order to provide utilities in this area in anticipation of development. There will be some reimbursement to the town by the developers for some of those costs to the town. The town has existing 16-inch sewer main in Antelope Meadows Drive near the northeast corner of the property. There is an existing 12-inch water line stub in Prescott and Pronghorn Ranch Parkway, the northeast parcel boundary, and existing 16-inch water line at the intersection of Parkway and viewpoint. These two water lines will be connected with the construction of the project, creating an important link in the overall water delivery system. As we've been discussed before, there were two neighborhood meetings that included this request and were held and were discussed at the work-study session on November 5, 2018. The first meeting was held at the Transportation Meeting Room at the Humboldt School District on Wednesday, August 27, 6:00 p.m. The second neighborhood meeting was held in the Cafeteria of the Humboldt School District. That was on September 29 from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Your staff brief includes more detailed reports of both meetings, as was discussed before, and staff or the applicant's available if you have additional questions on that. So again, in reviewing this request, the request of R1L10 PAD zoning is in conformance with existing underlying low-density residential designation of the general plan 2025. With the approval of the approximately four-acre rezoning, the revised Plumber Development Plan will be in conformance with the underlying zoning. The revised Plumber Development Plan is in substantial conformance with the plan approved in 2006 and has been approved by ADWR and reissued a certificate of assured water supply. Development will be in conformance with the Plumber Development Plan entitled Antelope Park and all the applicable conditions that may apply from the original rezoning and the current recommended conditions of PDP 1805. With that, staff recommends commission make separate motions to approve ZMC 18011 and PDP 1805 and forward to the town council. With that, staff's bell for any questions, and the applicant and his staff are also available.
Thank you, Joe. Start with the commission. Any questions of the commissioners?
Not at this time.
Joe, I do have one clarifying question for you. The zoning has been in place on these two parcels for over 12 years. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so all we're doing this evening is just basically some housekeeping, so to speak, and updating the original preliminary development plan that was done back in the day?
Well, correct. It's just the four acres is, again, just to, the bulk of the 62 acres was, has been, as you say, the R1L10 PAD since 2006, and it's just to, the four acres, just to more exactly accommodate some of the minor changes that were made to the Plumber Development Plan. But again, that four acres is in conformance with the low-density general plan on all the property.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Joe.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Another clarification. It's my understanding that the developer is simply completing the process of planning and doing what he has to do, to jump through the hoops, to build in conformance with the zoning, which is his right to do. And that were we to not allow that capriciously or arbitrarily, he would have a right to sue and would probably win a fair chunk of money from the town of Prescott Valley.
Thank you, Commissioner Rutherford. At this point, I'd like to invite the applicant up to answer any questions and/or make a presentation, and please state your name.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. My name is Rob Goopser. I work for Hilgarth Wilson, 2141 East Highland, Phoenix, 85016. I appreciate the opportunity to be before you again this evening to talk about the Antelope Park project. I think we're all kind of aware, and I know Joe's done a great job presenting tonight, so I'm going to try not to reiterate everything that he just said, but just to cover a few of the items. Again, we're aware of the location at the northeast corner of viewpoint and 89A. The request this evening is twofold. One is the zoning map change, which is 18011. It's just a minor zoning map change for a cleanup of approximately four acres from the RCU 70 to R1L10 PAD. And in addition to that, we have the PDP 18005, which is a revised PDP for approximately 62 acres, and it will be covering 189 lots. In terms of the general plan, the requests this evening are in conformance with the underlying low-density residential category, as you can see highlighted in the red dashed in areas. It is considered, again, low-density residential, 1.124 dwellings per acre. Our PDP that we're requesting this evening is approximately just slightly over three dwellings per acre, so it is in conformance with that underlying general plan designation. Should also point out, too, that compatible zoning districts per the general plan for this category are R1L and RS. So again, we're requesting that cleanup to R1L10 PAD, which is, again, in conformance with the zoning districts as called out in the general plan. Just a brief history. I think it's important to kind of reiterate how we got to where we are today. Joe had mentioned that the property was annexed back in 1999. The overall area was assigned a zoning category of RCU 70, which was comparable to the two-acre lot minimum that was part of the county zoning at that point in time. In 2006, the property was rezoned from RCU 70 to the R1L10 PAD for approximately 60 acres. At that same time, the PDP was approved for 177 lot, single-family residential development. I think it is very important to note that this zoning has been in place for almost 13 years now at this point. This was the previous PDP, which was the 177 lots. The lot dimensions were, the typical lot dimensions were 80 by 100 at that point. What we're requesting this evening, I'll cover here shortly, but the lot sizes that we're requesting this evening are a little bit more comparable to the current market in terms of adding a little bit more depth to the lots. People have a little bit more area to recreate in the, kind of the rear area of their lots and their backyards. In terms of the zoning map change, again, this is a cleanup before you this evening. Our goal is to request that change for approximately four acres. As you can see in the slide before you, it's highlighted in blue. Again, a cleanup, what we're doing is just trying to address the circulation network that has changed in this area. There's no longer a need for a curved road that's kind of perpendicular to Pronghorn Ranch, heading to the north into Parcel B, and as well as trying to realign the whole area, both Parcells A and B, to create a more efficient layout. It's difficult to subdivide and design with curves, as well as some tight angles, as you can see in the lower right corner of Parcel A. So again, just trying to straighten out some of the lines and have a little bit more of a cleanup. This is an image of the PDP before you. As you can see in Parcells A and Parcel B, Parcel A is to the right. There's approximately 82 lots in Parcel A. The typical lot sizes are 55 by 115, which equates to about a 6,300, a little bit over 6,300 square foot lot size. Parcel B, to the left of Pronghorn, is 107 lots with typical lot sizes of 65 by 120, which is just over 7,800 square feet in a lot. For the Parcel A, there will be areas of open space just as you come into the entrance, which will be taken off of Pronghorn Ranch. There is a secondary emergency access that will go out the northeast corner of that Parcel A, heading up to Antelope Meadows Drive. Parcel B will also have some substantial open space just off the entrance that comes off of Pronghorn Ranch, and there's also a secondary emergency access for Parcel B back to Pronghorn Ranch as well. Again, the new boundaries for the PDP to reflect the zoning map change for those four acres that we're requesting this evening. I think Joe covered the traffic improvements very well. I'm just going to touch on them real briefly. In terms of the developments for Parcel A and Parcel B, there will be right-hand and left-hand turn lanes into both of the parcels. There will also be improvements in terms of widening the viewpoint from 89A to Pronghorn Ranch, as well as lengthening the storage or the turn bay from right-hand, from basically northbound on viewpoint, turning right on to Pronghorn Ranch Parkway. We also will evaluate the signal timing at both 89A and viewpoint, as well as 89A and Pronghorn Ranch. In terms of the infrastructure improvements, Joe had mentioned that the 100-year certificate of assured water supply was previously approved for the 177 lot PDP. We did have that reissued based off the revised PDP for 189 lots. And also, we will be connecting to the existing water lines that do anticipate development in this area, both to the north. We have a water line to the north, as well as to the south at viewpoint. The sewer main will be connected to, which is existing in Antelope Meadows Drive, and it should be noted, too, that Prescott Valley Treatment Facility does anticipate the capacity to handle this development. The grading, this property does slope gently from the east, heading east to the northeast. Altitude and outfall is at the northeast corner of the site. All of the grading will convey the water to the historical flows that are there today. Again, it's just, I think you remember seeing this before. This is just a representative example of some of the housing product that could occur, both on Parcells A and Parcel B. Parcel B, to the left, the three on the left and the two on the center, those could be accommodated in the 65-wide lots in Parcel B. And then Parcel A, there's four images to the right on that slide, that could be accommodated in the 55-foot wide product. In terms of our civic engagement, I think we've met and exceeded the requirements that are for zoning map change and PDPs within the town. We did hold two neighborhood meetings, one in August and one in September. I think it's very, I think we should note that, obviously, there was a lot of opposition to some of the requests for the properties to the south of these two areas, both Parcel C and D, where we had requested more of a general plan amendment and a zoning map change to a medium-high-density residential. This project does not that request this evening. Again, this request is just for a zoning map change for those four acres for a cleanup. We're not requesting a general plan amendment before you this evening. So I think it is safe to state that the majority of what we heard at those meetings was not directed at these two parcels. Again, this is just a logical extension of the existing development pattern that you see to the north in Pronghorn and viewpoint with single-family residential development. And again, it is also in conformance with the underlying general plan. At that point, conclude my presentation, and we'd be happy to entertain any questions. The team is also here to address that.
Appreciate that. We'll open it up to questions from the commission. Do any of the commissioners have any questions of the applicant?
May I restate what was said?
Yes.
Plain words. An amendment to the general plan is not considered at this time. It's not on our agenda. We will not be making any change to the general plan. It's not what's being talked about tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Rutherford. I do have some questions, but I don't know if any other commissioners have any of the I do have, as you're probably aware, I raised some traffic-related questions at the work-study, and I wanted to say thank you for the amended traffic impact analysis that we received. I do want to ask about something with regard to public safety, and I'm going to use my laser here, if you can go back to the map of the project. So my apologies. So if you could see here, I'm wondering why this was not considered to actually extend this to Antelope Meadows Drive for a separate, another ingress egress. I know the fire department has approved emergency access, but in my conversations with them, they would have preferred a separate ingress egress there, going up to Antelope Meadows Drive, and true traffic circulation even up here to a full circle. Meadows Drive, and true traffic circulation even up here to full circle and/or down Parcel D, onto Pronghorn Ranch Parkway.
Mr. Chairman, this is David McGuire, also known as the Evil Developer. Happy to be here tonight to answer your questions.
Speak more.
You can speak a little bit louder into the mic.
There you go.
Okay. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. So specifically in regard to the design of the traffic circulation on the single-family detached parcels, the reason we did not extend a roadway to the north to Antelope Meadows Drive is it would be a very expensive thing to do. We have that drainage channel to go over, and...
Excuse me, ladies and gentlemen.
And, you know, this is all about the economics of making it work. And in order to deliver a subdivision that's a great design at the appropriate marketing size for today's builders, we have to take a lot of things into consideration, obviously. And so, we did, we do have an emergency access point, as you noted, to the north in that location. And the additional access to that point not only would increase the cost inappropriately, in my opinion, but we don't think it would really do a lot for the circulation itself. It obviously would give a secondary real road access point, but as our traffic engineer and our traffic report shows, the traffic really isn't going that way. The traffic is going toward Viewpoint Drive. And so, it's kind of just a judgment call that the cost would not be worth what it would satisfy in regard to additional circulation. As a matter of fact, there really isn't much traffic that goes north into Pronghorn or onto Antelope Park, Antelope Meadows Drive from our project, really, until the commercial were to develop, when there'd be some more cross-access and that kind of thing. So it's a matter of economics, and it's a matter of just practicality from the standpoint that really wouldn't serve much of where the traffic is flowing.
I had two other things for you. And in just a few minutes, I want to read what would be required of you and what you're proposing to do in Phase 1, which would be the, this development. One of the things I want to add into the Viewpoint Drive State Route 89A interchange, and I think truthfully, either if it's you, the town, ADOT, I truthfully don't care who does this, but I want to add review signal timing to improve intersection operations and improved signage. What I mean by that is that if you are leaving in the morning, everybody, for whatever reason, uses the exact right turn lane to get onto the highway and doesn't realize that both lanes turned right onto that highway. And they have a small, little itty-bitty sign that says only, right turn lane only. So I definitely think that better signage needs to be there, so Viewpoint Drive does not get backed up. And I realize that you're going to be required to widen Viewpoint Drive, but definitely, I believe, improved signage is necessary for that interchange.
Mr. Chairman, I have no objection to that. As you know, I've tried to be very cooperative with this entire project. One of the things that I think we lose sight of is the timing of what this will be. There is obviously an existing problem with access to and from 89A on Viewpoint. By agreeing to do this in the first phase, quite honestly, it's ahead of schedule for what the traffic will be that I'm actually producing. And keep in mind as well, that through this process, we have several months left to get to our PDP and the final plats and begin construction. It'll be another nine months of construction out there before there's probably even a model home. And then, you know, all the homes won't get built at once. That'll be built over a period of time, you know, even at a good sales rate of, you know, five homes a month, you know, there's two or three years' worth of build-out here. So the traffic that will be introduced will be gradual over time, and I think that, and we're happy to cooperate, I think it'll greatly improve the traffic circulation that exists today, far in advance of any impact that my project will have on it. I did want to point out a couple of little things that weren't mentioned. Part of what we're committed to do is also a transition lane north of Pronghorn Ranch Parkway back onto Viewpoint. We'll have two lanes now and a turn lane coming into Pronghorn Ranch Parkway on the south, and we need to transition those two lanes back into the single lane as it continues north on Viewpoint. So we'll actually have a taper of that second lane back into the one lane beyond that intersection. That wasn't mentioned, it's a minor detail, but we're trying to look at everything that makes sense and are happy to accommodate those improvements.
And then one other thing, with, and again, I appreciate the addendum to the traffic impact analysis, was Pronghorn Ranch Parkway and Antelope Meadows Drive, you said Phase 1 end for installing a four-way stop. Now, I realize that this may not be necessarily on your shoulders, it could be on others, but would you be opposed to basically moving that to beginning as opposed to end?
No, I'm happy to cooperate with whatever makes sense and helps the neighborhood. We want to be an integral part of this neighborhood. I think this is a very compatible use, obviously. It's single-family detached, it's lot sizes that are commensurate with what's there. It'll be home values that are commensurate, if not more than what exists there today. We want to be good neighbors and help in every way we can, and we're certainly happy to continue the dialogue about what we can do to be of help there.
So you have no objection to adding that?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the commission? I would like to read in for the record the sequence of improvements for Pronghorn Ranch Parkway, Antelope Meadows Drive, as well as the sequencing of improvements for traffic with regard to the entire project of, and just cover those with everyone here. So Phase 1, beginning, Viewpoint Drive, south of Pronghorn Ranch Parkway. Widen Viewpoint Drive from two lanes to four lanes. Viewpoint Drive, Phase 1, beginning, Viewpoint Drive, Pronghorn Ranch Parkway. Increase northbound right-turn storage to 500 feet with 150-foot taper. Phase 1, beginning, Viewpoint Drive, Pronghorn Ranch Parkway. Review signal timing to improve intersection operations. Viewpoint Drive, State Route 89A interchange, and this would be Phase 1, beginning. Review signal timing to improve intersection operations and improved signage at the intersection. Phase 1, when Access A is constructed, Pronghorn Ranch Parkway, Access A. Construct right and left turn deceleration lanes with 100-foot storage and 100-foot taper. Phase 1, when C, when Access C is constructed, construct southwest-right and northeast-bound left turn deceleration lanes with 100-foot storage and 100-foot taper. Pronghorn Ranch Parkway and Old Meadows Drive. This is in existing condition, so pretty much anybody could take care of this. Remove obstructions within sight-distance triangles. And the traffic impact study, just so you, everyone's aware, identified that there is a lot of issues if you are turning left from Pronghorn Ranch Parkway onto Antelope Meadows Drive. If you're looking to the right to look at, in basically, traffic from, on Antelope Meadows from Coyote Springs, that basically, the trees and, you know, the vegetation block the view, so that would be removed. Phase 1, beginning, this, again, Pronghorn Ranch Parkway, Antelope Meadows Drive. Construct a right-turn deceleration lane on Antelope Meadows Drive for southbound traffic. Phase 1, beginning, Pronghorn Ranch Parkway, Antelope Meadows Drive. Lengthen the northbound left turn lane to 300 feet with 90-foot reverse curve tapers. And then, Phase 1, beginning, Pronghorn Ranch Parkway and Antelope Meadows Drive. Install a four-way stop at the intersection. Pretty much, is that, all right, covered that correctly. Again, any other questions from the commission of the applicant? All right. At this point in time, we will be opening the floor to public comment. The chair and the commission are keenly aware that there's a great deal of interest and concern about this project and application. We would like to remind anyone interested in speaking to please keep your comments brief and focused only on the items that are on the agenda this evening, which are the zoning map change, taking four acres from RCU 70 to R1L. Should I have that correctly? And then, also, the preliminary development plan for these two parcels for the single-family homes. We ask that you not repeat what other speakers may have already said. For all other comments and concerns with regard to other aspects of this project, the other parcels and the general plan being by far the number-one examples, there will be future meetings at which you'll be able to speak to those specific issues. Again, please keep in mind that in accordance with the state law, that any topic that is not on tonight's agenda cannot be taken into consideration or discussed at this time. Again, speakers will be limited to three-minute intervals, and you'll be allowed to speak once. I'd ask that you direct all your comments to the commission through the chair. If you have any questions, we can have staff or the applicant ask them, answer them after comments have been concluded. With that, I will open the floor to public comment for both the zoning map change and preliminary development plan. Who would like to come first? Sir? And please state your name for the record. There's also a notepad right by the microphone. If you can just legibly write your name for the record, we'd appreciate that. Also, just speak very clearly into the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. This has to do with the preliminary development plan. I'm Dennis Royalty, resident of Pronghorn Ranch. When I spoke to you last month, I forgot to mention that I was privileged to be a member of the Fall 2017 class of the Town Citizens Academy. There was a consistent theme through all of our academy sessions. That theme was that our government leaders in Prescott Valley want public input to improve their decision-making. So in that spirit, I rise tonight to plead that you order an evacuation study for our neighborhood. I'm not aware that such a study has been conducted. This is much more important than traffic impact studies that leave the impression we live in Mayberry. Many of us are worried about being evacuated in event of fire if Pronghorn Ranch Parkway has hundreds of new residents at the front door of our neighborhood. You have an action item before you tonight that applies to this. Please remember that Antelope Meadows is a very long road, very long, that leads to Pronghorn Ranch Parkway or Coyote Springs Road. As such, Antelope Meadows is the only way out of Pronghorn Ranch for most of our 2,000-plus residents. The same is true for others who live in rural areas farther down Antelope Meadows. Had high winds blown the other direction during the Viewpoint fire, most folks would have had to flee down this single road. This includes families with newborns who live across the street from us. Images of trapped, burned cars and lost lives at Paradise, California remain fresh in our minds, and yet you stand on the brink of approving steps that could threaten many of us without considering an evacuation plan. Is there really such a hurry that you can't authorize an evacuation plan and then study its input prior to considering Mr. McGuire's proposals? I'll close by reading you something we were given at the Citizens Academy when Mr. Parker presented to us. Planning and zoning responsibilities include, I quote, "Seek and evaluate public input. Consider short-range and long-range impacts with all proposals. All proposals advise public of possible alternatives or process for appeal." And here's another responsibility. Base recommendations on findings of fact provided by the applicant, code, general plan, studies, and information received at public hearings. So respectfully, respectfully, please take the time to arrange for and carefully consider an evacuation plan for Pronghorn Ranch, not just the evacuation plan for the 189 lots. Thousands of lives could depend on it. Commissioners, thank you for your time and for your public service.
Thank you for your comments. Please, no clapping. Ladies and gentlemen, please, no clapping. Appreciate that. Yes, sir?
My name is Dave Wallace. I'm a resident of the Pronghorn Ranch area, and I do appreciate this opportunity to address the commission on the proposed rezoning of various parcels in the Pronghorn Ranch area. I think my comments are pertinent because we all know that, that when the developers ask to do certain things up front, there's always run the possibility that there could be an obligation for further approval of other actions based on the commitment made by the developer. So hence, because the developer is trying to develop all these parcels, I think it's wise to address the entire, needs of the entire set of parcels. I wish tonight to address the issue of risk. Zones and changing in zoning by local governments are done to serve many purposes, including increasing or decreasing the level of parcel utilization, accommodating changing demographics, and emerging markets often motivate zoning changes. However, zoning changes could also be approved, proposed, and approved to rectify prior mistakes, correct assumptions, and provide incentives to business and developers to participate in rectifying prior judgments. Local governments can have an impact on the market value through parcel, through parcel zoning. Rarely do we see a zoning change request that has a negative effect on the market value of a property. In this case, the value of the parcels will increase considerably with a proposed zoning change, even with the required infrastructure improvements and debt repayment. The developer would not be pursuing this project unless there was an increased ability to have profit. However, there's really nothing to prevent the current developer from selling the parcels after the zoning change and a new outside developer come in, constructing future assets of lesser value. This shifts the risk of poor future development then to the residents rather than the city. The developer has indicated to you that the project does not pencil out, as well, under the current zoning and without the zoning change. This statement is an indication the developer wants to increase and reduce his risk of loss or have less profit by requesting a change. Again, the risk shifts from the developer to the residents, who will bear the brunt of the negative effects of the proposed changes. We can clearly see that the town staff has outlined in the town's Risk Staff Report, when we turn to page 7 of the November 20 staff report, that states, "The town has made a large investment in order to provide utilities to this area in anticipation of development, and there will be some reimbursement to the town by developers." This statement in and of itself does remind decision-makers of the prior investment made in the affected area by the town, but it also suggests that the town could be at risk should these costs of four improvements not be recovered. Just what is the effect of the town trying to reduce its risks of little recovery of the cost improvements by agreeing to a zoning change simply because that is the only request on the table? Again, one must ask, is the town shifting the risk to the residents by grabbing an offer that contains significant negative effects? Exhibit B, the North Side Improvement Cost Estimate spreadsheet, contains the November 20, 2018 staff report that indicates that the developer will pay the town $1,61,706 for the recovery of the town's infrastructure investment that would have been lost should no developer or ratepayer step forward within the prescribed time period to repay the town. These costs cannot be recovered in an offer referred to as stranded costs. Stranded costs by a local government are often subject to criticism by citizens as a reflection of poor planning by a government. We have not seen any disclosed deadline that is being imposed for the repayment of the loans to the town for the construction of these assets.
Sir, your time is up.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Yes, ma'am, in the back.
For giving us a chance to speak and share our thoughts. Both Joe...
Your name, ma'am?
Oh, I'm sorry. Debbie Melanson. I'm a resident of Pronghorn Ranch. Earlier this evening, both Joe and the other gentleman who spoke, who are agents for Mr. McGuire...
Can you speak into the mic a little bit more, please?
Mentioned that they had met their obligation by having two meetings, which the community was invited to. They referenced a meeting on August 22nd, sorry, I'm a little nervous, and a meeting on September 29th. I attended both of those meetings. The first meeting on August 22nd was called to a halt by the fire marshal because it was too many people in attendance. So that, in my mind, it does not constitute a full meeting, since we were not able to get that much information from Mr. McGuire. And then there was another meeting held on September 29th in an auditorium where the acoustics were abominable. It was extremely difficult to hear what any of the four presenters were saying. There were four small stadium podium setup with some easels so we could hear the four speakers, and of those four speakers, there were probably 15 to 20 of us concerned residents standing as close as we could so we could hear as much as possible, but none of us could hear the questions that the other residents were asking, nor could we hear the answers that we were given. So I don't think that constitutes a meeting. So it concerns me that we're asked and invited to come to these meetings, and we are respectful, and we're quiet, and we're considerate, and we listen to the things that are being said. But at the first Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, you folks were given a piece of paper that said the town had, they had met their obligations to the town by having these two meetings, yet those meetings did not qualify as meetings. Both meetings were insufficient for providing answers to the residents of Pronghorn Ranch, who will be directly affected if this development is allowed to go through. And I understand A and B are only four-acre conversations, but the whole package... And I understand A and B are only four-acre conversations, but the whole package will affect those of us that live in Pronghorn Ranch, and I think that should be considered, that those meetings do not qualify as meetings which are required to make these changes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm right there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Duski.
As a point of clarification, once again, folks, we're not changing anything except that four acres. Tonight, what we're doing is approving a preliminary plan for an R1 development that's been on the books for 13 years. So that's the only thing that's on the agenda. It's the only thing that needs to be discussed. And if you have some question about the change in the zoning of the four acres, I think that would be acceptable, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
But I think the rest of this is really for another night. It's just not what we're here for tonight and has no bearing on the fact that this man owns this property, it's been zoned for 13 years, is residential, and now he wants to build on it. And he's allowed to.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. With regard to what Mr. Duski just said, I'm not going to go on for long. I just wanted to talk about the traffic analysis assessment-
Sure.
And talking about our exit, or the exit, going out to Antelope Meadows and his judgment call as far as the safety of the people in and around that area. I don't appreciate him making that judgment call.
Are you talking about right there where I brought up earlier?
Yes, where you pointed out, and he says, you know, that was a cost economics versus, basically, it's economics versus the safety. And it's a cost-benefit analysis, and it's his cost at our risk, and I don't appreciate that. I also agree that we do need an evacuation plan and we need something presented. Nothing that Mr. Maguire says is believable. He makes money on this deal. He cleans up, and we're at risk. And I would appreciate you looking into that more deeply. I mean, he's made us pitch to Pronghorn Ranch, and frankly, we're not buying it. And this is in the letter that my husband typed out. He's out of town on business, so I just read a little bits of it, and the full thing has been turned over.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, in the back with the black hat.
My name is Dave Hurtco, and I reside in Pronghorn. The one thing that really I find irritating is the fact that when I first moved out here, this was the ideal place to be. We did our due diligence. We checked on what was going to happen, how it was going to happen, et cetera, et cetera. And we bought in Pronghorn. Now, the traffic situation is absolutely horrendous. I would like to know whether or not Mr. Maguire's group or the people of the town of Prescott Valley have done their due diligence. Have you got any hard facts as to the amount of vehicles that travel down Viewpoint, that travel down Antelope, that travel down Coyote Springs, and go to 89A? We are not allowed in Pronghorn to cut across Parkview to Viewpoint to get out. We are not allowed to use the county road from Parkview east to Coyote Springs Road. What I would like to know is, if you can, folks, can give me hard numbers on the amount of vehicles traveling on a daily basis through all those areas, not just one, then maybe I'll consider what can happen. I would like to know if there are any hard numbers. And if you can, you can email me. You all know where I live. Let's get some hard numbers, gentlemen. Do your due diligence for a change, all right? It's not only our liability, his liability, it's your liability as individuals and as members of the elected council of the town of Prescott Valley.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you.
And just a reminder, if everyone could please sign, if you spoke, please sign the yellow notepad with your name so we have it for the minutes.
Hi, my name is Ann Keenan. I live in Park Ridge, which is down Viewpoint. Just for the developer, the egress out of parcel A to connect with Antelope Meadows, I think you should consider that it's not just on a daily use basis, but what people would need to do in case of emergency-
Ma'am, if you can, just keep your comments to the commission, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
What people would need to do in case of emergency. You know, when we had the fire and everyone's trying to get out down Viewpoint, and there just was no fast way out, and the fire came fast. So having an alternative exit where all the people in that parcel aren't trying to get out that one road, where they could get out the back and be able to go down Antelope Meadows, I think is a wise choice to have that. That's all. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Anybody else? Sir, back there in that gray shirt with your hat?
My name is Dan Conkle. I own in the Pronghorn Development. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am concerned about safety getting in and out of the project. I think that safety issue is even before Mr. Maguire's work that he's proposing to do, so I think it's upon the city of Prescott Valley to take care of that. With regards to your request of having a four-way stop on Pronghorn Ranch and Antelope Meadows and cut down the trees, if you put a four-way stop, you don't have to look very far down. You can save the trees. So that's really what I wanted to say.
Thank you, sir. Sir? Rob?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, firstly, the point of order I'd wanted to ask about, I just wanted to get-
For the record, what's your name?
Oh, sorry. Rob Essen, Pronghorn Ranch resident. Point of order I'd wanted to bring up related to just getting confirmation from the Planning and Zoning Commission that they felt that the public hearing qualified under 1330012, which was a question I'd asked at the last meeting, and although I got a response from Mr. Parker, who didn't actually answer that question. I brought it up at council. I dare say some of you have seen it. However, recognizing my time is limited and Commissioner Rutherford and Duski's comments, I'd like to tell you about a conversation. I've had a number of conversations with Mr. Maguire. I'd like to tell you about one of them and how it may affect your considerations of the PDP and ZMC that you have before you right at the moment. At the November 5 meeting, I introduced myself to Mr. Maguire. He's fully aware that we oppose what he's suggesting for the entirety of the development, and I'd suggested, you know, please, can't you develop at all low-density? This bit obviously, R1L and the ZMC will land up being low-density. And he responded that under his current contract, he wouldn't be able to make money on the project, wouldn't be able to do it if he didn't get the higher density. The worry that causes us is it links the two. If you approve the PDP and ZMC today, under his current contract, what would happen? Will he be able to go forward? And the implication is, from what he said to me, and I appreciate his candor, and I have no reason whatsoever to doubt his sincerity, that under his current contract, he might not be able to go forward with this PDP and ZMC if, under his current contract, he doesn't get the subsequent GPA and ZMC that you will be dealing with at a later meeting. And we worry about that. We worry as to whether or not that puts the town and the citizens in a difficult position. We would like you, if you feel it appropriate, to call, we'd call on you to ask Mr. Maguire this evening about his intentions for the R1L development that you're dealing with, this PDP and ZMC under the current thing. If what his intentions are for that, if the GPA, which is 18002, and the ZMC, 18007, were turned down, and if he repeats, he'd be unable to make money on the entire project under his current contract, we would ask that the commission consider very carefully whether it might be better to hold off approving this relatively uncontroversial low-density residential bit until you hear back on the medium-density, oh, sorry, medium-high-density. I mustn't make that mistake. Medium-high-density pieces in the future.
Sir, your time is up.
Thank you, sir. Sir, you're right over here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I remind the audience here that should this be approved on the R1, and for some reason, this developer not be able to proceed, any other development in that area would have to come before us as a new proposal from a new developer. And I think that should alleviate some of your fears because, you know, it just can't be proceeded upon without having another preliminary development plan approved.
Thank you, Commissioner Duski, sir.
Hi, my name is Dana Ramsey. I'm from Pronghorn Ranch. Just a couple of quick questions, and it pertains to water. There's just been a recent article in the newspaper about the water and coming up with the shortages in the water area over there. The contractor talked about a 12-inch water line that's into this system right now. I live at the north end of Pronghorn Ranch, and with all of the construction now, since we've moved in there since 2012, we've had to adjust our water pressures five times. Right now, we are barely getting a trickle up at the north end over there. I came from Wyoming, and because of the fracking underneath the aquifer in Cheyenne, Wyoming over there, the price of the houses have gone down. Water is a major, major issue as far as the values of our houses go. If we lose, like the newspaper says, the amount of water, if it goes down, we are going to lose up to half of our values in our homes. And I think that they should take a, how, this recent study, 100-year study, based on the new information that's been put out in the paper, I think it should be reevaluated, what the amount of water is and how much water usage and needs are going to come into that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to let you know on water, folks, that water is a state issue. The Arizona Department of Water Resources grants assured water supply certificates to developments that is out of our purview, and they would not do so if there wasn't adequate water. So that's just something to be aware of. It is a state issue. It is not, it is not something that is under our purview this, here this evening.
Glenn Brower, Pronghorn Ranch. Just a clarification, if you will. Right now, I'm looking at the gen, and we're at item number seven, Public Hearing Items, number one. Is that correct? That's what we're discussing right now.
We are discussing number one and number one under action items. We're discussing both the zoning map change and the preliminary development plan.
Okay, so then, after the end of the discussion, there will be a vote under the action item. Is that correct?
Well, we'll be voting on both the zoning map change and the preliminary development plan.
Okay, very good. So that was just a clarification. One thing I would like to the commissioners to remember is that in 2007, the viewpoint, the development infrastructures was not completed. The houses were built, but the infrastructure was not completed. I would definitely recommend, highly recommend that you commissioners, before any building permit is released to the developer, or to the builder, I should say, in this section that we're talking about, that all the off-site infrastructure, the roads, the 91 exits, all that be completed prior to any building permits issued. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Ma'am, you were first, and then we'll go, if you want to get up, sir, if you want to get up and just, you know, join, you know, kind of join the line, that way we have that.
My name is Sharon Skoronek, and I live at Viewpoint East. And I did attend your meeting in November, and I did ask to be contacted about the situation with roads. Nobody contacted me. So my concern is, if you're saying this is for the public, and we ask for responses, why are we not getting them before you go ahead and do these votes? My concern, then, is what it is today. It's about evacuation. It's about fire. It's about the danger. I live back there, and I got scared when I saw what you're doing tonight because, again, because you're talking about everything near 89A, you're neglecting to tell us what's going to happen to those of us who have to use Viewpoint Drive in evacuation, and it's a bottleneck, pure and simple, made more so by going to the four lanes but leaving us two lanes, which, by the way, our developer was supposed to see that that happened back when Viewpoint was built. Fire has terrified me all my life, and I've always been very careful to choose places where I can get in and out safely so that I don't burn up. I do not want to have happen to me what happened in Paradise. And it seems to me that what you're doing puts all of us in danger that live further up the road on Viewpoint Drive, not just Pronghorn, but Viewpoint also suffers greatly from it. If you had responded to me in November to discuss the situation and show me what you, how you're going to accommodate that, if you're not going to honor what the fire department said was the best possible egress and ingress, you're not going to listen to a citizen like myself, who is older and disabled. And that upsets me a great deal. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dan Sullivan. I live in Coyote Springs. And just to kind of add on to what the last speaker was saying in regards to the traffic, it seems the current plan proposed will be shifting a lot of traffic onto Antelope Meadows and going towards Coyote Springs Road, and we already have five miles' worth of properties that go that direction that also need to be- need to be exit the area in case of emergencies or fire. So pushing, you know, the current traffic plan, you know, half of it or so over to Coyote Springs Road is not a good idea because there's already traffic there. Secondly, in regards to the, one of the previous speakers, they were talking about the two meetings that had taken place, and the one on, that needed to be notified on November 5th. Those people, some people that I know that live in Viewpoint, were notified the day of November 5th that the meeting was taking place that day. So the 10-day notice was not valid. And in regards to, you know, just in general, I know, right here it said, you guys don't want anybody talking about the parcel D and parcel C, but it says right here that you're going to be voting on action item one and two. And action item one does include verbiage about the 62 acres and 189 units proposed. So I don't know why you're not taking questions on that tonight.
We are. That is the preliminary development plan for the single-family homes, sir.
No, I'm talking about the 189 units proposed, the high-density or the medium.
That's not high-density, sir.
Okay. Well, when is that meeting going to take place?
Don't know at this point, sir.
Okay. I, I hope that everybody here has an open mind. I've heard comments from the Commission here and from Rick Dusky that seems like, I hope you guys already don't have your minds made up and are going to rubber stamp this. It does not, between Viewpoint, Pronghorn, and Coyote Springs, this will definitely impact all neighborhoods. And I don't think Coyote Springs has been involved in any of the discussions here because some of this project will bleed over on Antelope Meadows and Coyote Springs, whether the off-site parking, you know, if there's on the parking on the complex, when they get down to the parcel D and C. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Sir, in the back, if you just want to come up front and kind of just stand in line, greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Steve Hall. I'm a resident of Pronghorn Ranch. Parcels A and B, I can see that that of itself is a pretty limited minor change, but I'm concerned that I'm hearing about the traffic improvements that are going to be done at the same time as that, as part of that approval, that you're approving changes for the roadways themselves and the traffic. But it seems that the traffic is also contingent on what happens with the other three parcels, and there's no discussion about that. I would like to know if the traffic plan is accounting for the traffic that's coming from those other developments as well, so that you're not locked into making traffic, roadway improvements right now, and then having to tear it out and do it again when those other parcels come up.
We can have that answered for you, sir, because they've done a very comprehensive study, so we'll have an answer for you.
And if those, if those improvements, the proposed traffic improvements, do account for those other developments, then it seems like we should be addressing those at the same time tonight, because it doesn't make sense to me that you address parcels A and B, but you're also incorporating effects of traffic from C, D, and E, but there's no discussion of what those developments are going to be that's going to lead to that traffic. It's, you know, how can you separate the two?
And, sir, just because, it's just because of the existing zoning already exists on these two parcels.
But, but to make the traffic changes, you're saying that you already know what's going on with those other parcels? So you're piemeling A and B.
If you allow the applicant to do so, he can address that, and I would be, because that, that's a very good question, and we can have him answer that for you.
It seems like we're addressing traffic for all five of those parcels, but we're addressing only the, the development of A and B, so we're kind of piemeling things here. And that doesn't seem to make sense.
Thank you.
My name is Steve Travers, and I live in Pronghorn Ranch. And the biggest thing that I wanted to clarify is, Mr. Rick, you mentioned the fact that we're only talking about parcels A and B tonight, which is correct, and that there's a minor change for those. However, the meetings that we all attended was about that whole entire corner. And I want to confirm and clear that, moving forward, before he can go any further, he has to have other meetings to talk about those changes and those things that he wants to do. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
That is correct.
Okay.
Right now, he, we have no plan before us for those quote-unquote multi-unit parcels. They just, that plan doesn't exist right now.
Very good. We just wanted to make sure that that was the case, and that was the, that's the part.
And as, as I stated before public hearing, that there will be future meetings.
Very good.
Where you'll be able to speak to those specific issues. The town is going to require a separate open house or community meeting for those parcels.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner.
I seem to see that there are two basic, major situations occurring here. We have the one of the fact that the R1 development should and can be approved without any changes of any kind. And then we have this issue with the traffic and the evacuation issues and so forth. I can certainly appreciate the concern of the people regarding that evacuation plan. And I wonder, isn't it possible that we could go ahead with the development, which is perfectly legal and proper, of the R1s, and commission a request that we think about a study some way to look into this evacuation plan, which might solve some of the concerns of the people and of mine, frankly?
Let me stop you right there, Commissioner Dusky. Let's finish the public hearing, and then we can come back to the Commission. I think that would be appropriate, and I think that's a very appropriate comment. And then I think we need to, we have some questions with regard to that as well. Ma'am?
Hello there. My name is Susan Stanfill, and I live in Pronghorn Ranch. And I'll just go in on the coattails of what you spoke about. I just would implore you, please, to postpone your decision this evening until a proper evacuation plan has been formulated, come up with, and then we would have a legal, proper meeting for all of us to, to hear that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sir?
My name is William Shugard. I live in Pronghorn Ranch on Lucky Shoe Way.
Can you speak into the mic a little bit more, sir?
Okay. I live in Pronghorn Ranch on Lucky Shoe Way, which is very close to parcel A. And I just wanted to make a comment about the usage, I think our usage in exiting Pronghorn Ranch is, would be similar to the people in parcel A. And about half the time we go out, Viewpoint, about half the time we go out Coyote Springs. And so that point you were making earlier in the meeting about maybe there should be a connector onto Antelope Parkway, I think is a good thought, in the sense that there is demand for exiting either way, okay? You know, I don't know what the implications for the cost are, obviously, but I think there is demand. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, sir, come on up.
I'm Jack Tabor from Pronghorn Ranch. I would like to give my time to Mr. Essen, if possible.
It is not possible, sir.
Can I get a reason why?
He's, he's only spoke once, sir. We can only allow that once. Thank you. Ma'am?
Andrea Sansom, Pronghorn Ranch. I, I take considerable issue, having had a background in emergency services, first responders and such, with quite a few experiences in disasters, man-made and natural. And I was also present for the May 11th Viewpoint fire. I feel a bit trivialized and marginalized by the cost issue regarding the lane coming out to Antelope Meadows, because it isn't a matter of money, it's a matter of life. And it can't be that expensive to put something out, and if it is, if you can't build in these safety features, then why are you building at all? Because I fear that if they are not required to make this an issue and build that, that the same thing is going to happen as happened at Parkview, because that developer went out of business or shut down, chose not to develop any further. So they were promising down the road, et cetera, et cetera. I've also spoken at the city council meeting on that topic, because if that happens, we're going to run into more problems. So if they do it on the front end and ensure our safety, we couldn't get out, and they had to shut down and open up Parkview on an emergency basis, and that should not be something we have to wait for, for someone to cut chains or unlock locks. It's ridiculous. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If we, I'd hate to ask people to conclude the remarks, but we do have a lot of questions we'd like to ask the applicant and staff. Again, if, we've heard things with regard to evacuation study and traffic. Does anybody else have any other comments that are not necessarily evacuation study or traffic related to this project?
Matt, can I just say one thing, please?
Will you come up, come up, sir, and then we'll...
Hello. My name is Chris Fallon. I know you guys have been talking about this evacuation plan. I have a little experience in this. I have 12 years plus as being an ex-firefighter, and I'm also a retired peace officer. I live in the community of Pronghorn. I also implore you, I know that you don't want to hear any more of this, but I implore you to do an evacuation study. Life should trump money anytime, period.
Hey, ladies and gentlemen, no clap, no, please. Again, outbursts cannot be tolerated. Please, no clapping.
I'm, I'm here to show my respect to the council. I'm just imploring this. Every one of you up here has family. All of you. I'm sure all of you have been touched by some type of tragic event. I'm not against this man building. I'm all for homes being built. I just think we need to take in consideration families, children, elderly, that's the bottom line here. Thank you for your time.
Sir, if you could just flip over to the next speaker.
We're going to take the remaining speakers here in line, and then we're going to close the public hearing. Again, please keep your comments to this application. We've heard about the evacuation study. We've heard about traffic. We will get those addressed. So please, if you have any additional comments that are not those...
My comments are about traffic, but I think maybe they come from a little different direction. My name's Craig Kiggins. I live in Antelope Meadows. And I'm questioning the assumptions that are made in your traffic report. I just heard a comment made here that the report did not consider the parcel C and D and E. So I'm wondering how you can make a valid traffic report if you don't have the whole thing. Another thing that I'd like to ask is, Pronghorn is developing north very rapidly, adding many, 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 many houses. There's going to continue to be development in Antelope Meadows, and all that traffic is going to funnel down Antelope Meadows, and you're putting a bottleneck at the bottom of it. And I want to know if you've got that figured into your plan or not. It doesn't seem reasonable that you do, because you just don't know what's going to be. But the, the plot maps are out there, the lots are there, and the builders are coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, if you could sign in, please, sir. Thank you.
So after the gown and the blue sweater, we're going to close the public hearing.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I only have a few comments. One of the presentations, excuse me, your name? Oh, first name is Bard, last name Schatzman. One of the presentations was for, so there's a 100-year water guarantee for single, but it was for single-family dwellings, not for high-density.
We're not discussing that here this evening, sir.
Okay. The other is that, one of the presentations in which some people have mentioned that you couldn't hear and there wasn't adequate seating or something, also some of the visual displays were not high-density, so it falsely represented the intent of the, the building. There is no representation of the high-density. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, my name's John Spear. I live in Antelope Meadows. Thank you for the time. Three quick issues. The first is that the Commission seems to be looking at this as a minor change, but we're talking about 12 more residences and more people. And what I think that we are all experiencing in this area is death by a thousand cuts. They're all small, but you keep cutting away. The impression is that the favor and the emphasis on the Commission is to support the builders. But we're the voters, and we're the people, and we need our rights protected as well. Secondly, what was the second point? We'll shift to the water issue, and we've all seen it, and I, I heard you, I heard you, but 12 houses impacts the water, and that's your decision.
No, sir, that is not, it is not, it is up to the state.
But I have a question. And the question is this: Does the city have a plan to bring water to the well users when the wells run dry in our valley like they did in Chino Valley?
Water cannot be discussed here this evening, sir. I'm sorry. It is, it's not, it's not under our purview. It is a state issue.
Another cut, another of the thousand cuts. And the third issue is this: This whole development of Viewpoint and Pronghorn Ranch came with a lot of promises, and the city has gone out of its way, annexing land and rezoning land to help developers. And developers made promises, and we all know that those promises weren't kept. So I just want the Commission to go on record, understanding that we're not doing a very good job. And the, the promise to give us the exit through Parkview hasn't happened, and the city's doing nothing about it. The water detention retention on the east side of Antelope Meadows, they're doing a good job on that. The west, on the west side, they didn't do a good job. And so due to actions by the town of Prescott Valley, the people in Antelope Meadows are receiving physical damage due to floodwaters, because the rate of runoff is far greater than it was prior to the development.
Thank you, sir.
Bill Picorni, Pronghorn Ranch. Sir, I beg the question about water usage. I understand what you say, it's the state responsibility, but what good is a 100-year certificate if we have a 10-year drought? We should be prudent.
Again, sir, it's, it's up to the state to issue certificates. That's the Arizona Department of Water Resources. We live in what is called the active management area. They are responsible for that, and we do not have any purview under that. Please, please understand that. And I, unfortunately, I'm going to have to stop you, because we do not have any authority for that, sir.
We in our building should still be prudent, enact accordingly. I do have another subject, which I think no one has mentioned. What about the impact on Prescott Valley? We're going to have additional roads that need to be maintained, snowplows, cinder, salt, routine maintenance, they're, they're all going to be of cost. I think we are probably going to increase our police force by need and also public safety. I think the firehouse across from Robert Market is going to be, need to be manned full-time, 24/7.
It is currently, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Fred Crossley. I'm a Paradise, or a... I'm a Pronghorn Ranch resident. I think, I have an issue that actually has not been discussed, so maybe this would be refreshing for you. I don't have a pointer, but I think I can use what's...
Go ahead and speak into the mic, sir, and I can help probably point.
Okay.
A little bit closer into the mic.
The mic?
Yeah.
Okay. I think everybody would agree that Pronghorn Ranch is a high-rent district, high-priced property. So with that statement, the developer, I don't know who built the entrance to Pronghorn Ranch, I don't know if it was the developer or the HOA...
Are you talking right here, sir, at Viewpoint?
Yeah, where it says signal timing.
Okay.
Yeah. They went to a great expense to create that really nice, beautiful sign that says Pronghorn Ranch. Any future property, if a person wishes to buy property in Pronghorn Ranch, coming off of Viewpoint into that entrance, will see a beautiful sign that says Pronghorn Ranch. As soon as they turn right, they're going to pass a commercial zone, then they're going to go through some high-density areas, and then they're going to go eventually over to Pronghorn Ranch. So I think that sign needs to be changed to Antelope Park, and the Pronghorn Ranch sign be moved up to where it says right and left turn lanes.
Thank you, sir.
Because that definitely is not Pronghorn Ranch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good idea.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Ben Snyder. Appreciate your consideration, and I want to just speak to you from my heart. As you may or may not know, I'm the founder of Pronghorn Ranch. 20 years ago, my wife and I came in and purchased what is now Pronghorn Ranch and have developed that over the 20-year period. And we're quite proud of it. We live in the community. We care very much for the people that live there. I would guess to be 2,500 people, including yourself, Matt. And we care about you, Matt. We care about you commissioners. We care about the councilmen that make, and women that make the decisions here. I was approached, when this came, first came up, when David McGuire brought this project, I was approached by numerous members of our community. We have 99% opposing this entirety of the development. I know you want me to speak about just Parcells A and B. But what I want to talk about, and I hope I can speak to your hearts, what I'm going to ask you to do is very simple: Delay this vote tonight on these two parcels 30 days to your next meeting, to give these people with all these concerns a fair and enough time in a legal public meeting where they can ask their questions. There's a lot of concerns about these two parcels. And what's happened here in this process is, because it was brought to us as an entire project and scared everybody, just like the Viewpoint fire really scared people. The reason you've got all these people here, and you've got 99% of the people in Pronghorn, and what I've been told by a statistician, over 80% of the Viewpoint members. We know of only five people who don't oppose the opposite, or oppose the opposition, Matt, you're one of them. We don't understand it because we're asking reasonable questions. There are more questions about these two parcels: access, landscaping, details. But what happened was, you came in and scared us with this huge plan, which we consider a major plan that deserves major consideration and a legitimate public meeting. And I just implore you, I'm speaking to your hearts, I'm asking you to delay these votes 30 days. And I want you to know, I spoke with David McGuire today, and he was all but willing to agree to that, except for the fact he's contractually obligated not to. I believe he'll tell you that he would have done it if he wasn't contractually obligated. But if you make that decision because you're listening to all of us, then he's off the hook with his contract. You please, all of us, giving us a chance to really understand and focus on these two parcels when we're not scared and when we have a fair chance to talk about this in Thank you, Matt.
Ben, why don't you stand, stay there for a second. Can you remind the commission what we did on May 14th, 2018 of this year?
Go ahead.
Can you remind us and the audience what we did for you on May 14th, 2018 of this year?
Go ahead.
I want you to remind us.
What does it have to do with these concerns?
We approved...
Why don't you care about these people, Matt?
Excuse me, we approved the final preliminary development plan for Pronghorn Ranch. How many, we'll get to how many homes we approved. But at that point in time, did we order an evacuation study for you, increasing homes?
No, but you should have. And I've got a proposal to do one, and I would offer, if you won't, to pay for it. I'll do, I'll do that for you, David. Richard, I'll pay for the evacuation study. We need one. People are scared. That Viewpoint fire could have done what it did to those poor people in California.
All right, we'll get to it. We'll have one more speaker, and then we'll get to other things. Ladies and gentlemen, please, we want to finish up here.
Hi, my name's Kathy Harmon, and I'm from Pronghorn. I didn't plan on speaking, so I'm a bit nervous, but there I have three points. First off, I want to find out, it feels to me that there's never been any kind of proper notification given to people in Coyote Springs or Viewpoint. A lot of people we meet know nothing about what's going on. I was told, I don't know if it's true, that they only have to put in postings. We only saw postings going into Pronghorn, on Pronghorn Ranch Parkway. So I don't feel that the three communities that are being affected have had the opportunity to even know what's going on. The other quest, this is a question. Are you, is it my understanding that Viewpoint will have four lanes that are going to go into Pronghorn where all these homes are being built? All the entrances to these homes are off Pronghorn Ranch Parkway, but will remain just two lanes?
No, ma'am.
With the turn?
Let me, let me address that real quick, just so you know. The plan is that Viewpoint Drive will be widened to four lanes from 89A all the way up to Parkview eventually. On this particular project, though, the line, the Viewpoint will be widened to four lanes from 89A to Pronghorn Ranch Parkway eventually. Yes, it will be widened to four lanes.
But right now, nothing, Pronghorn will remain the same?
Pronghorn Ranch Parkway?
Yes.
That will, it, it, we'll have the applicant address that, because he can give you better answers on that one.
So right now, it's the same?
I'll have, I'll have him answer that for you.
And then lastly, I was curious to know if there was any crimes that is done about having all these additional people and homes? Is that anything?
We can have that addressed.
We can have that addressed.
Thank you.
Okay. I do ask for another 30 days. I don't feel people have been properly notified throughout the two, the three communities.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Richard, I'd like to invite you up first, and then we'll have David McGuire up second.
How can I help you?
Can you address evacuation studies? And then also, how many homes were approved back in May for the final preliminary development plan for Pronghorn Ranch?
I don't have the number for Pronghorn Ranch, but there was an increase based on a similar process through the Arizona Department of Water Resources where additional resources were allocated to Pronghorn Ranch, and those were put to use in additional lots. There was a reconfiguration of the approved preliminary development plan that you reviewed and ultimately went to the town council as a final development plan. Again, all consistent with processes before the Planning, Zoning Commission and Town Council. In terms of an evacuation study, we would look to the fire district to have personnel that are professionals in preparing those type of studies and recommendations. I don't believe it would be at a great cost. I think it's a good idea, and I'll pursue that further with the fire marshal, Rick Chase. I think that, again, they have some expertise. Obviously, they have a horse in the race, because they are also equally concerned about life safety.
And then, can you address some of the comments that were raised by proper posting and then notification and responses?
There's a requirement for notice within 1,000 feet of the property boundaries that are being affected by a zoning map change or previously a general plan amendment. That process brought out quite a number of people, I think equal in size to the group that we see this evening. Because of the failure of the first neighborhood meeting to accommodate those that showed up, I determined that that was not valid and directed that they can conduct an additional neighborhood meeting. That was held as a open forum process. It's very similar to what we've had success with when we're doing meetings regarding traffic improvements, so that you can bring people in and one-on-one talk with them as an open house format. So staff had recommended that to hopefully get people to dialogue. I don't know that these properties are within 1,000 feet of county properties that reside within Coyote Springs. There may be some, but the notice procedures regard 1,000-foot notice radius. A couple of other comments I'd like to make in response, that I made some notes. The traffic analysis is done by a registered professional traffic engineer. And one of the speaker's comments was, did it look at the entire project that was previously proposed? Indeed, it did. However, this evening's meeting is concentrating on just a portion of it, because the traffic analysis was split into each aspect and each impact based on each parcel that's being proposed for development. We have on staff also professional engineers. I'm not one of them. But as part of the process, a scope of work is developed, that scope of work is approved by the Town of Prescott Valley. After its approval, the town staff goes through those studies, because yes, there are impacts, of course, to the town roads and how they're built, and ultimately who maintains them and so forth. Those studies have been reviewed in a detailed fashion and have been approved by the town engineer that is a registered professional engineer. So when people say, have there been studies, have there been counts? Absolutely. There are traffic counts available on all of the town's roads. I'm quite certain that Yavapai County is obligated because of potential liability to also do traffic counts on Coyote Springs Road. Certainly, if that's something that the town engineer needs to do their evaluation, they can request it and receive it from the county. The comments regarding assured water supply, Mr. Chairman, you are correct. State of Arizona has the most stringent water law in the world, and that is requiring that there be a 100-year assured water supply. The hydrologists and other professionals at ADWR are the one that review those information to determine if they're valid, if their assumptions are correct, and I find them to be very conservative. So issuance of that assurance of a water supply for 100 years is unequalled anyplace else in the world, to my understanding. In terms of the availability of water and pressures further to the north, one of the key aspects to development in this area is to connect multiple sources in a loop system, which will provide an opportunity to equal out pressures in the area, so you're not having to push water a greater distance. The town has developed and routinely updates a water model and sewer model, which are also evaluated by the utilities director and his staff, all of which are engineers, to make sure that water pressures are adequate to be able to serve the needs of people. Development in this area will bring one additional aspect or component to that water supply issue, and that is interconnection of systems. Redundancy is good from that standpoint. One question was whether or not the improvements to the roads that abut the two parcels that are going to be residentially developed will be throwaway improvements. They will not. They will be phased improvements that will take place, which will be further utilized as additional development occurs in the area. At some point, Pronghorn Ranch Road, based on development from adjoining properties, will be a four-lane roadway. The two-lane section, together with the median, was developed by the initial developer based on a traffic analysis that was submitted by a traffic engineer that said, that's what's necessary to service Pronghorn Ranch Road. As additional properties are developed residing along that road, additional lane widths, as well as turning movements, will take place, and those improvements will not be throwaway. One question regarded a crime study. We do have people on our police department that are keen to that. The police department is party to review of all development scenarios that come before this Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm not aware of any concern, but I'll circle back and ask if they have any specific concerns about additional single-family residential development in proximity to Pronghorn. Are there other questions you have that you would like me to answer?
Could, could I ask?
Sorry.
What you talked about earlier with this evacuation study, how does that affect what our action item is tonight on this parcel? Or is that a stipulation that we could put in, that that be completed before it goes to town council? Or since this is something new, could you help us?
I don't, I don't think it's something new. I think it's something that became top of mind when the Viewpoint fire happened. We're complacent until we see a problem, or we see people's vehicles burned up in California and people die in fires, and then we get excited. I believe that the county and the town need to work together to come up with a better way to evacuate that entire area, because one of the speakers pointed out, there are parcels that go all the way north of Coyote Springs, which are unregulated parcel divisions in Yavapai County Wildcats subdivisions. There are no assurances that go along with buying property outside of a subdivision provided by the state of Arizona. One question was asked, what happens if your well runs dry? To be very candid, if your well runs dry, that's your problem, because you have no 100-year water supply assurance issued by the state of Arizona, because you live on a municipal system. But there are a lot of properties that are developing. When Coyote Springs was developed, prior to Yavapai County having the ability to regulate subdivisions, they cut up 36-acre parcels. Those parcels very quickly came down to five- and 10-acre parcels. And you move further to the north, six miles out, and there are two-acre parcels, all of which have ingress and egress on one road, Coyote Springs. There is a need for east-west roadway communication in a bad way. Parkview is the only one that's been accommodated, and might ask that was, add that was accommodated by the Town of Prescott Valley. But that road through Coyote Springs and future roads out to what ultimately will be in alignment of Glassford Hill Road need to take place, and those things need to be planned for, as they're illustrated on the general plan for the Town of Prescott Valley. But those things may also become priorities as part of an evacuation plan.
And Richard, what other outside agencies besides the police department review plans?
All the utility companies. The county, as an example, would have reviewed this, because it's within some distance of Yavapai County. We received no comments from Yavapai County. ADOT has an opportunity to review traffic analyses. That's some of many. The county health department has a review. They focus mostly on commercial developments. We have, of course, the... We have, of course, the central Yavapai Fire and Medical Authority, if that's the correct vernacular, but they review materials as well and are very timely on making comments. I do believe that the applicant has addressed, per the fire marshal's requirements, a secondary emergency access, I think, to qualify the speakers we're talking about, and I think Commissioner Rankin and you talked about a road to the north as a new public roadway. I, too, don't believe there'd be a great deal of utilization of that road because most of the traffic will be going down to Viewpoint to be able to get down on 89A to go to places of commerce in downtown Prescott Valley or on over to Prescott to get their bread and milk and so forth. So I don't see a great deal of traffic going out to Coyote Springs Road. I can share with you, if it's meaningful as this does unfold, I'll have a member from the Public Works Department share with you the type of data that they collect and analyze on how frequently or the intervals that they analyze that data to determine where improvements need to take place within town roadways, as well as, from a regional standpoint, the review of roads in a regional context as part of the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which comprises not only Prescott but Prescott Valley, Dewey-Humboldt, Chino, and Yavapai County.
Thank you, Richard. Anybody else have questions for Richard?
Thank you.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to ask Mr. Maguire to come up. And before we get started, Mr. Maguire, just want to ask you point-blank here. Do you want us to delay for 30 days?
Mr. Chairman, no, I do not.
Okay. Go for it.
Okay. And I can expound on that a bit. We did have a conversation today, and there were many things discussed, and I explained to them perhaps, I tend to be more open than I probably should be about some of my contractual arrangements and the rest of it, but it honestly makes no sense to delay this. We know we have issues with future proposals, and we know that we have to go back and have another neighborhood meeting. We are reconsidering what to do with those parcels at this point. We've had that discussion with the neighborhood representatives, and those discussions are ongoing, but I'm not at a point where that's a public issue at this point. The real point tonight, as we've discussed, is this is a great, single-family detached neighborhood. It's an appropriate land use. It was approved 13 years ago. It's time, in the scheme of things, to get it developed, to get it built in a quality way. It's a much better design than existed before, and my engineer pointed out to me a good point that I had forgotten in regard to the secondary access. We specifically designed the two entrances there, shown as A and C, into the parcels A and B, to be medianed entrances, and the specific reason for that is, in many situations with neighborhoods where there's only a single point of access or limited access, we like to design a main entrance that has the ability to have two-way traffic on both sides of a median. So in effect, we have a secondary emergency access built into the primary access. So if one side were to be blocked, the other side is, has the ability for two-way traffic. So in addition to the secondary emergency access, which your engineers have approved, we do have that as an additional accommodation. So I guess just briefly, in regard to neighborhood meetings, we are going to have another neighborhood meeting as we proceed beyond this. There was really not much comment about these parcels in the neighborhood meetings we did have. We honestly tried the open house format, thinking that was a much more neighborhood-friendly way to do it. I hired all my consultants to be there. We had four stations where people could speak. It lasted four hours, and we had people there the entire time. So I really am sorry if people didn't have the opportunity to get up close and personal, but we tried our best to give them that opportunity. In regard to the improvements and traffic, I have our traffic engineer here tonight. They have done a study, which I believe is very professional. As Richard mentioned, it's been studied and approved by your own staff, professional engineers. If there are specific things you would like Sarah to address, she'd be happy to get up and address those things. But again, the pertinent issues here are the improvements that we are proposing. Honestly, beyond the scope of what I would normally hope to have to do with a single-family detached neighborhood, specifically with the viewpoint improvements, those are more than adequate for this development. And again, because of the timing of this project, it's going to take several years to build out, and the improvements will be there to Viewpoint far before there are enough neighbors here to make an impact on that, and it will be an immediate improvement for the entire area. I've mentioned before, I have three adult children with their families that live on Paquito Valley Road. I'm very concerned about the traffic danger as well, so I wholeheartedly endorse going forward with the study. It's an existing condition. It's something I'm happy to participate in. I do not believe anything I am doing will make that a different or worse situation. By making the improvements to Viewpoint, I believe it will make it a much better situation. I guess what I would point to is an analysis of sort of a water flow issue. If you have a lot of rainfall, it takes a long time for the rainfall that rains 10 miles upstream to get to the outfall. And the bottom line is, if there's an evacuation, the people close to 89A are going to be long gone before the people who live 10 miles to the north even get there, and we will have accommodated a much better way to get out. So I think this in itself, the approval of this and allowing me to move forward, will enhance those issues. There are certainly more issues to be addressed, and I would love to participate in any kind of study to move forward with that evacuation plan.
A few questions for you, Mr. Maguire. Would you be opposed to approval contingent upon an evacuation study?
No, sir, I would not, and the reason is really because of what I just stated. I believe that what I'm doing will actually improve the current condition and will, and I think I've mentioned this before, if nothing else, even if I go away with my tail between my legs here, I'm glad that this has become a point of contention, if you will, or, not really contention, but a point that is important, that everybody is focused on now because it is an issue. We need the ability to evacuate people and be safe, and I want to be a part of that, and I believe that I will be a part of that by beginning this process.
Do you, or, you know, this might even be a question for staff, have a date as opposed to, can you give us a date as to when maybe a study might be completed? I mean, if we do make this?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wouldn't be able to answer that, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure if Richard would be able to answer that.
Well, to do something right, you got to get all the parties together, which is an unknown. Obviously, everybody in the room wants to be part of it, but those that own property in the area and those that are decision-makers that actually can make those decisions, we'd have to scope the study. I would expect that doing something like that would probably take 30 days to determine what you're going to look at, who's going to analyze what, and by which time you're going to gather that information back and analyze it. I don't know what kind of resources could be made available by the fire district. Certainly, I would talk with the chief. The chief of police would be interested, I'm sure, in doing that. Others, including property owners and engineers, the town management, obviously, would be interested in participating in that. I couldn't give you a specific timeline. I can tell you that when this commission undertook the general plan, it took us approximately two years from beginning of the process by developing the public participation process all the way to its approval. And I'm looking at Rick because he was chairman of the planning commission then, and I think we probably held 60 meetings, something in that neighborhood. I know many, many beyond those that were necessary to meet the statutory requirements. I'm not intentionally trying to be vague, but I'm not going to tell you and try to mislead you that this is something that somebody's going to complete in a very short order. I would prefer to take your recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and kick it upstairs to the town council and talk with my colleagues, who are department heads and the town manager, and come up with a plan, and then return to the Planning and Zoning Commission with others in tow that would participate in that process and have a separate item to discuss an evacuation plan as opposed to holding the developer up for us to get our act together to be able to present those materials. That would be my preference and recommendation.
And I, to go along with that, I guess my concern is, we have really four master-planned communities that have basically single access. We also have Quailwood, and we also have Stone Ridge that have basically single access. And I would think if the town was going to go through the process to have it done for one community that was in that situation, they'd probably need to do it for all four of those.
I think that that's a point well taken.
I would agree with you, Commissioner Rankin. I definitely think that, you know, because it's going to be more in wide, you know, wide-ranging in scope, definitely, I agree that, Richard, if you can, you know, get this on a future agenda item for us and get this going, I think that, if I'm hearing correctly, is that what we would want?
I was going to mention the same thing. We just can't think of one area. We should think of the whole community, the whole.
I agree.
And that study shouldn't be, you know, a reckless study. It should be really looked at. Kind of disappointed we talked about that at workshop. Really, nobody really pounded on that.
What was that?
That workshop we had on this issue about, we talked about the fire and so forth. I'm just disappointed that we didn't get the reaction from the people like we are tonight.
So I can tell you, I can get back with you with some reasonable scope. I would expect that I can generate something by your next meeting.
I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. So, Mr. Maguire, I'll ask you to come back up again. So we'll take, if, you know, because we're going to do more of a wide-ranging evacuation study for the town of Prescott Valley, definitely it shouldn't be just on your shoulders. I would like to ask on with regard to traffic, came up today, in Phase 1 beginning, in your interpretation, Mr. Maguire, are you, is that, would you say, prior to the issuance of permits, or would you even go along with that?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I guess I haven't given that thorough thought. Typically, with the building scenario, a builder will want to get at least models up and get into production somewhat before they are called to be complete with everything. I think that it would be appropriate early on in the stage of building permits to require it to be approved. I think that with the construction, it's going to be an issue, and it's going to cause some problems because we're going to be blockages while you're building the extra lane and all that stuff. So it's going to take a while to get all this done. So I would say that I'd be happy to live with some kind of a stipulation that after a certain number of building permits or, you know, a certain percentage of them, something like that, I'm not sure if that's something you're comfortable with me working out with staff or not, but I'd like to try to get it to be more in line with the construction schedule and with the amount of traffic that we'll be generating.
Any comments on that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is a little to one side, but I think it needs to be understood by the people here that a builder is expected to pay for improvements that his project makes necessary. He cannot be required to correct existing problems, and I think that's what has been asked in some of these comments. And constitutionally, you'd be taking somebody else's property to solve your own problem. And Mr. Maguire is apparently going beyond what this immediate project will require, and should he?
Ladies and gentlemen?
Should he develop more in the future, he would be required to, again, develop according to what that development would create as far as needs are concerned. But to expect him to correct all of the traffic problems that you now encounter is not, if you think about it, it's not fair, it's not reasonable, and it's not legal.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Rutherford, thank you for those comments. I didn't want to say that, but I am voluntarily making improvements to Viewpoint because I know it's needed, and I know it's something that the neighborhood would like to see happen, and I think that I can incorporate that into the costs of this project and still make it work. So again, even though I'm sure my detractors don't believe this, I am trying to do what's best for the town as well and recognize there are existing issues, and in any way that I can help and afford to do that, I'm happy to participate.
Commissioner Roberts?
I just want to agree with my commissioner friend down the way there. What's going to be good to come out of this whole thing is that we were looking at the future of a evacuation for our city, and I think that's very important. So at least one thing good is coming out of this, as my aspect, anyway, that we are, because of this, we're going to look at the whole community because you can't, you can't subject one developer. We have to do the whole community.
Any other questions from the commission? Thank you, Mr. Maguire, unless you want to have any?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one other thing. I was looking through my notes here quickly to see if we addressed everybody's concerns. One of the concerns, I believe, was that if I go away, what happens? And I think Commissioner Dusky answered this to some respect, but once, just for the audience's purposes, once you approve a preliminary development plan and then a final development plan, that's what is required to be built. And if somebody wants to change and do something different, they've got to come back before you, as Commissioner Dusky mentioned. So there isn't a bait-and-switch going on here. There is a specific plan. It's a very detailed plan. The final development plan will be very specific, all the construction documents, final plats, all the details needed to actually build this, the water sewer plans, all of that, and me or anyone else can't change that without coming back through the process. So hopefully, that gives them some comfort that what's being approved tonight, hopefully, and I would urge you to approve it, is what's on the books and what has to be done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this point in time, we'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion and/or vote. The first vote we need to do is for zoning map change 18-011, and subject to the conditions as stated in our packet. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve? This would be, again, for zoning map change 18-011.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on zoning map change 18-011? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dusky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yeater?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Surtur?
Yes. And then, second action item this evening, is there a motion to approve preliminary development plan 18-005, subject to the commission, the conditions as stated in our packet?
So, yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve PDDP 18-005, subject to the conditions.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on preliminary development plan 18-005? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dusky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yeater?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Surtur?
Yes. At this point in time, I would like to take a five-minute environmental break, if that's okay with the commission, and then we'll come back to our other items. And then we'll come back to our other items. Zoning map change 18-012, a request by VP Prescott Valley LLC, agent for zoning map change from C2PAD, Commercial General Sales and Services, Planned Area Development, to RSPAD, Residential Sales and Services, Planned Area Development, on approximately 12 acres located on the southeast corner of Glassford Hill Road and Long Look Drive. The accompanying preliminary development plan is PDP 18-007, upon the application of VP Prescott Valley LLC, agent to request for preliminary development plan for development of 151 detached one-story units on approximately 12 acres located on the southeast corner of Glassford Hill Road and Long Look Drive. And just for the commission, this is right next to the park there on Long Look. Presenting this evening is Mr. Joe Scott. Joe?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. The, this subject property was a part of two annexations, one in 97 and another piece of property in 2007. And those annexations gave the property the zoning classification of RCU 70, again being the zoning classification most comparable to the former Yavapai County zoning of RCU 2A. And as we've discussed a number of times, by state law, the property must be annexed in town with most similar zoning that exists at the time. And the two-acre zoning then is generally holding zoning until urban development occurs with the general plan amendment and rezoning to a higher density use per acre. The Prescott Valley, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved a zoning map change for approximately 25-acre portion of the annexed land from RCU 70 to C2PAD at a public hearing on January 10th, 2010. And that request complied with the Prescott Valley General Plan 2020 designation at the time of Town Center Mixed Use Low Intensity District. The Town Council approved the rezoning in February 11th, 2010. The subject property is located within the Town Center Plan, is included as an area-specific plan within the current general plan 2025. A designation within the Town Center Plan is of a mixed-use low intensity district. The mixed-use low intensity district provides for a mix of urban uses, including retail businesses, office, and also residential uses. The RS, proposed RSPD, PAD zoning district is in conformance with the general plan 2025. Illustrates the zoning, general plan. The, the rezoning is accompanied by the Plumbering Development Plan, PDP 1807, which indicates the building location and heights, along with parking, access configurations that will provide the guidelines for development of the site as part of the PAD overlay district. Final development plans are required for specific development projects in the PAD overlay district and approved by the council after approval of Plumbering Development Plan by the Planning Commission. The PDP here depicts a partially gated community, the gates controlling vehicular access only and providing the 145 one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom dwelling units. The combination, a combination of covered, uncovered parking totals 269 spaces. And the project includes a leasing office, a swimming pool, rec area, a dog park, and a network of pedestrian paths. The site plan also depicts direct vehicular access to the bungalow community provided at two locations. Primary front door entrance being located along the proposed new segment of Main Street, approximately 320 feet from east from Glassford Hill Road, again identified in the report and the exhibits as Access A. The second entrance will be located along Long Look Drive, directly opposite from Gelding Drive, identified as Access B. Both accesses will be entrance and exit points for the community, and both accesses will have onsite vehicular turnaround provisions on the public side of the access controlled A traffic impact analysis was prepared dated October 2018. The primary purpose of the report was to demonstrate to the town that the site access and off-site roadway improvements proposed for this development will adequately offset anticipated impacts of the project pre-existing traffic conditions and studied where the intersections in the immediate vicinity of the project site. The recommended off-site roadway improvements are illustrated in this exhibit here and subject to plan approval by the town engineer as part of a final development plan approved as stated in the conditions of rezoning. A neighborhood meeting was held October 15th, 2018, with all property owners within 1,000 foot having been invited at first class mail. A copy of the attendees who signed in is attached in your packet along with the neighborhood meeting summary. With that, the commission is first being asked to consider if the request for the zoning map change to RSPAD is in conformance with the general plan 2025 and is appropriate with limitations set forth as conditions of approval. The request is consistent with the land use and goals of the Prescott Valley General Plan 2025. Separate motions will be required for each request, the ZMC and the PDP. And again, staff feels that the project is in conformance with recommendations of the general plan 2025 and recommends motion approval. And available for any questions, we also have staff, applicants, staff available, including the traffic engineer, if you have other questions.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions of staff from the commission? Commissioner Dusky?
Yeah, Joe, is this basically the same bungalow concept that we saw presented in a different location?
For your reference, it's a similar proposal. We do have, you know, there's, in your packet, I'll scroll through real quickly, again, some of the examples of the products.
Pictures, yeah.
Or the public in U2 review, again, a mix of one, two, and three bedroom. All, all single story, correct. Some attached, some detached, some garage units and, can't read the fine print, but anyway. And some offices and some storage areas that would be included too. So with that, if there's any.
Thank you, Joe. Any other questions?
Joe, just one, I, along the outer edge, both on Long Look and Glassford Hill, I see the curb and gutter, is there any sidewalk included with that?
Yes, a few full off-site improvements, curb gutter sidewalks.
Any other questions of staff this time? All right, seeing none, I'd like to invite the applicant up.
Hello, my name is Dave Grounds and I'm the owner of Dorn Homes. Thank you for reviewing this for us this evening.
Mr. Grounds, do you have any other things to add besides what was presented?
No, we're, we're very proud of it. We think it fits in well with the urban core of Prescott Valley. We've worked tirelessly with our architects and engineers and planners to, to make it something that we think will enhance that, that corner. We're going to make a number of improvements that we think will help, actually help traffic all around the property. Architecturally, we've designed it so that it's going to, it's going to have a really great feel. Currently, the zoning on that property would allow buildings, if I'm not mistaken, up to 30 feet high. And we're coming in with single fam, you know, single-story bungalows that will not exceed 17 feet. We think it's going to be charming and, and something that will complement what's already started happening in that, in that great urban core.
Is it gated?
Yes, it'll be gated off of Main Street and it's also going to be gated off of Long Look, yes.
In terms of, you know, signal improvements, I know right now, coming southbound from Glassford Hill Road to Long Look, that seems to be the longest inner, you know, longest traffic light in town. What improvements are you planning on making?
So with your permission, what I'd like to do is bring Toby White up, who's our traffic engineer, and she can speak much better at that than I can.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Toby White. I'm with CivTech Inc. It's, our office is in Scottsdale and we did the traffic study and prepared some of the off-site geometry, the geometry for the off-site improvements. As far as improvements to the intersection of Glassford and Long Look specifically, the town has recently, as I'm sure you're aware, put a major investment in that intersection and is actually, to the extent that's possible, has increased the capacity of that intersection greatly. There are challenges out there, there's some challenging right-of-way, there's challenging alignment, there is the proximity of Lone Cactus Drive that are all kind of making it difficult, particularly in the morning when you have that combined with four schools across the street, to get through that intersection. The project is going to, however, provide, add some capacity to the Long Look that should prove, you should see some relief from that. As you know, you've spent a lot of money on Long Look already, but it needs to be finished. And this project is going to do that. This project is going to, well, all the way around, the project's going to get you another half-mile sidewalk, half a mile of curb and gutter, and a good portion of that is on Long Look. There's also, if you've been out there, there's, I don't know how to better explain it, that a choke point between, say, Pacina and Valverde. Because of that one little choke point where it's skinnier than the rest of the road, can't get, it's keeping you from having left turn lanes, everybody's fighting for the same little bit asphalt. And with that little bit of more asphalt, plus the curb and gutter and some restriping, you're going to have a nice continuous, your, your turn lanes will be separated. you're going to have a nice continuous, your turn lanes will be separate from your through lanes, and indirectly, that should provide some improvement to the intersection of Glassford and Long Look. But at the end of the day, there are still challenges with that intersection, that some timing, signal timing, and some other things that could be attempted. And I have talked with your consultant that does that, and they're, you know, constantly trying to be responsive to that. Hope that answers your question.
I appreciate the response, thank you.
And the Main Street that comes out is, anybody coming out on that can come into it from the south, come into Main Street, but Main Street then will only be allowed, you'll only be able to make a right turn to go north on Glassford Hill Road?
Correct. You can make a, the project will be adding a southbound left turn lane in the existing median. So you'll be able to make a left turn in, but you will not be able to make a left turn out.
Which is something Brad talked about.
Dave, I have a question for you. Is Main Street there, on the map that was just up showed an extension of that road coming down future, but yet on one plan, it kind of shows ending a circle court there. Is this project potentially an extension of more that you plan to do?
Yes, so down the road, as more development happens in the talking glass development, you'll eventually see Main Street continue all the way to Lake Shore. But for right now, we're going to take it all the way along the southern boundary of our project, and then we'll have that cul-de-sac that we worked with the town on and creating. But ultimately, it's going to be, I think, a terrific way to connect that whole area all the way down to the entertainment district.
So I guess my question was, are you hoping to be able to develop more extension from this?
Sure, yes. So if this goes as we think it will go, we would look forward to trying to do another one of these down the road on the other side of the park as it wraps around. But right now, there's no concrete plans to do that at all. It's only a verbal discussion at this point.
All right. Any other questions of the applicant? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
At this point in time, I'll open the floor to public comments with regard to the zoning map change and, again, the zoning map change 18-012 and preliminary development plan 18-007. Is there anyone wishing to address the commission? Once? Twice? Go for it. And please state your name for the record, and then go ahead and fill that sheet out as well.
My name is Melissa Gilbetta. I reside off of Lone Cactus, and there is a big bottleneck issue there, and it's a troubling intersection like they talk about. And I also work off of Panther Path for Head Start.
Okay.
And so there are issues there, because I go down to the light from the high school, and I sit at that light trying to get across Glassford, and I sit there while the light turns for people to turn, but the light will never turn green for me to go across, which is irritating. But I don't agree with this being a gated community. We don't have that many gated communities in Prescott Valley. That's not what Prescott Valley is about, so I disagree with them being a gated community. And I'm also disagreeing with bringing in more luxury apartments that start at $1,000 a month for a one-bedroom. Our community does not need that. The apartments there off of Windsong have over 400 names on their waiting list for families of low income that can't afford these apartments. So those are my concerns. You know, Long Look has been torn up three years in a row now with improvements, and I'm not looking forward to, because they want to do this this summer, that would be the fourth year in a row to impact all of the residents in this area with more road construction. So I just have some issues with this project, and how many bugs this is going to bring into my house, how much more dust this is going to bring into my house, and this does not go through the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else wishing to address the commission with regard to this project and the zoning map change? All right, seeing none, we'll close the floor to public comment and then bring it back to the commission for further discussion and/or motion. Any further discussion?
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Go for it.
Everybody's quiet. I'll make a motion to approve ZMC-18, or 18-02.
012. 012, sir.
Now, second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dusky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yater?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Zurcher?
Yes.
Any further discussion on preliminary development plan 18-007? If none, can I get our motion? Go for it.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dusky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yater?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Zurcher?
Yes.
Final thing on our agenda this evening is our call to public. Consideration and discussion of comments from the public. Those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for further consideration of decision at a later date. Please keep in mind that anything that was on this agenda cannot be discussed, and again, any future things, would ask that you withhold your comments for future meetings. Anyone wishing to address the commission?
I'm still Dennis Royalty from Pronghorn Ranch, and this does bear a little bit on what we talked about earlier, but there's no big complaining here. I just wanted to address Commissioner Roberts. When he said, as to your comments about why didn't I bring up the evacuation plan November the 5th, frankly, I didn't think of it. But what I did do was speak to the traffic and the congestion, and I think I might have even congratulated you or another one of your fellow commissioners for your concern that was expressed during that meeting. And I guess I would blame us all, everybody who was in the audience, everybody up here on the dais, in terms of, well, why didn't this issue come up? I did raise the issue of congestion not only at the meeting of November the 5th, but with my wife in a letter to the newspaper published last month. So this idea for the study came up since then in conversations with fellow residents, and that led to my remarks tonight. So we are pleased you're receptive to a study, not just for our neighborhood, but for others. Great idea. And I'm so glad, and I'm guessing you all say, this is probably overdue. And yes, Mr. Parker, maybe we were prompted by the fire, but if it can save lives in the future, that's a great thing. I would just ask for an expedited timing, given the dry season, I'll be honest, before we know it. And yes, Mr. McGuire says he'll improve Pronghorn Ranch Parkway, but what happens when his construction bottlenecks traffic during construction over the years? Please take that into consideration. Yes, his new residents will be able to get out first, as he said. Somehow, that's not too comforting to those of us further down the road, but I just would conclude again by saying thank you for the chance to contribute and also for your service.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
I too am still Rob Essen from Pronghorn Ranch. I wanted to bring up an issue that I actually brought up at council, so some of you may have heard the council meeting. At the last call to public, November 5, I had brought up the issue that I'd sent to the Planning and Zoning Commission, an agenda request on August 30, to discuss major versus minor on the entirety of Mr. McGuire's stuff, and it's been turned down. But the question I actually asked at November 5 was to get a reasoning from the Planning and Zoning Commission. The response I received from Mr. Parker actually just reiterated what we already knew, and I acknowledged in the August 30 letter. We know what Mr. Parker's interpretation and Mr. Legler's interpretation is. We know that. What we're asking for is the opportunity for you to listen to our arguments on our interpretation, because we strongly disagree with the town's interpretation. We'd like you to give us the opportunity to argue it in front of you. Now, once we've done so, you may obviously make the appropriate decision that as a Planning and Zoning Commission, you may do, but I'd like to reiterate that the question that I asked November 5 was not, what is the town's view, because we already knew it. I already acknowledged it in my August 30 letter. The question was to get back from you what your reasoning would be for not even listening to us and allowing us to argue the issue and then make a decision. So that was, that's it. I know you, well, I think you probably can't answer that right now, and you'll have to send it back again, but I would mention that the Town Code of Conduct, Section 10.1, does ask that you be forthright, so I reiterate what the question was, and we would very much like to have that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben Snyder again, honorable commissioners and Richard. I just wanted to let you know that Young Kaprowski sent me just Friday a proposal for an evacuation plan, and I mentioned earlier in my comments that I'd be willing to pay for that, and it can be done in one week for that project that you voted on to council. I would like to see that that not wait a month, and I don't know what to say other than, again, I offered to help, and it can be done in a week. And Young Kaprowski's somebody that you respect, you've seen her work for years, great gal, really bright, and we can get it done in a week. So I just, I want to reiterate that offer and/or suggest that you require that to go forward for the project before it goes to council. The other thing is, I felt like when I spoke earlier, I may not have got through to you when I asked you to wait 30 days because...
We've already made our decision, so discussing this right now is a moot point, sir.
Yeah, well, this is the point I want to make. When you have attempted public meetings that aren't legal and they're misrepresented, okay, and you get everybody scared about multifamily and all this other stuff, we didn't have a chance, as I tried to explain, to focus on the two items you voted on tonight, because I have a number of issues with those.
Again, because it's already been discussed, we cannot entertain these comments. If you don't have anything else to say, I'd have to ask you to sit down, sir.
Can I ask you what you will do about the evacuation plan I've offered?
We've already directed staff to conduct an evacuation study, to start an evacuation study for the entire town of Prescott Valley.
What about this project? I'm asking it to be done in a week so it can go to council.
Sorry, this project's already been discussed and finalized, sir, by this commission, by our vote this here this evening. So staff has been directed to, you know, conduct an evacuation study for the entire town of Prescott Valley and then get back to us.
And if I can get this evacuation study done in time, like, in a week for the council, can we take it to council?
You know, that's your privilege, sir.
Richard, is that all right with you?
Actually, there's a whole process involved.
Yeah.
It's not just him.
Oh, and I know.
So if you let the process unfold, it'll be something that'll be worthwhile. If you just don't, because the evacuation plan doesn't scope everything that needs to be looked at based on all agencies, it's not going to be written or work the paper that is written.
Richard, every time she's done a study for you...
Okay, sir. Because, because...
She gives you a scope, and she'll give you a scope...
Sir, this is not...
You can approve.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, we can't conclude, we can't discuss this any further.
I'm really shocked.
It's not on the agenda. Any further discussion from call to public?
My name is Edward Jennings. I spoke on November 5, and I had a question regarding the traffic coming in on Pronghorn Parkway and the large number of peoples that are potentially going to be living in this area of multifamily housing and so forth.
We've already addressed that, sir, here this evening. So any further questions, I would have to direct you to staff or the applicant, because we've already discussed traffic here this evening.
I understand. I asked a question on November 5. This woman here said they would get back to me. I gave her my address so that I could have a response to that. I've never received a response.
Definitely make sure you get one.
And the question to repeat?
All right, thank you, sir. Yeah. Yeah, we'll definitely get back to you, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any further discussion from anybody from call to public?
My name's Charles Pratt. Been a member of Pronghorn Ranch for a whole week now, but in light of an evacuation plan, I grew up in California, lived in downtown Scottsdale for 30 years. I've been involved in a lot of fires where I had to evacuate, got caught in roads and stuff like that, so it really, I'm really proud of the fact that we've recognized a problem here, and I can't more than emphasize that we carry through on that. I've been stuck in those things, and it's frightening. It's probably worse than the earthquakes, anything else anybody ever wants, when a fire's coming down on you, and I think some other people express. So I just wanted to reiterate that it's really important to carry through on that study and get it, something implemented, so that people are safe. Thank you.
Sir, I can tell you wholeheartedly that we will see that through. Thank you. Anybody else for call to public? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, December 10th, 2018, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
And before we, I hit the gavel, I just wanted to say to everybody out there, I wish you a very Merry Christmas and a very prosperous New Year. Thank you very much for coming out this evening, and again, thank you to staff for everything that they do to help us out. It's greatly appreciated. We stand adjourned.
[applause]